With the meeting of the planning, oops, yeah, thank you for the. Uh, with the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a hybrid meeting, planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center. Thirty-two Church Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Duck Room, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so that you can be seen by others when, if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman. During the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and or your camera is not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during the public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor Monst's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available to the public meeting calendar page of the town website. WWW dot Guilford uh C T dot gov, and also if it was direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from commissioner. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hands to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, after clarifying questions are exhausted, those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward. State their name and address for the record and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will be asked to come forward, speak their name and address for the record and make their statements. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearings. And the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court of Desire. Ten, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department at two zero three. Four, five, three, eight, zero, three, nine, or by emailing planning dot zoning at Guilford C T dot gov after nine AM. Eleven, all applica- all actions taken on applications tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. See this evening are the following members who will please identify themselves. Uh Commissioners Kevin Clark.
Present.
Bill Freeman. And let's see, Ted Sands.
Here.
Philip Johnson.
Here.
Sean Braz goes out, Frank DeAndrea.
Here.
And I'm Scott, I'm in chair. Uh, and I don't think we have any of our alternate staff either. Staff present are Steve uh Natick, interim uh town planner. Nigel Mills, Assistant Town Planner. Uh, this meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice. Uh Sean's not here. Uh Frank, do you think you could read the legal notice for us if I put it up?
For a thing.
There you go.
Thank you. Legal notice Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven thirty PM. Attendees may join the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center or via the Zoom platform by using the following link. Due to limited space, members of the public wishing to attend in person are asked to register with the Planning and Zoning Department. You could join the meeting at that link. Um, the meeting ID is six, three, nine, six, three, two, zero. Uh, and then you can find a local number at the next link. Following the applications will be heard. Ryan P. and Aaron M. Conley, fifty-four Water Street. Map thirty-two, lot seventy-one, zone R three, special permit to construct a two-car garage and accessory dwelling unit. With a footprint above the seven hundred fifty-five square feet. Seven hundred fifty square feet. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Planning and Zoning Office and on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may attend via web connection. And shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning dot zoning at Guilford C T dot gov twenty-four hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office. Dial two oh three, four, five, three, eight, zero, three, nine for assistance. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, the twenties, no, no, the, yeah, the twenty-seventh day of June, twenty twenty-three, Scott M. in chair.
Thank you, Frank. Uh, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Ted, give a second to Phil. On favor, please say aye.
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 All right, first item on our agenda is. Ryan P. and Aaron M. Conley, fifty-four Water Street, map thirty-two, zone lot seventy-one, zone R three. Special permit to construct a two-car garage and accessory dwelling unit with a footprint above seven hundred fifty square feet. Who do we have here to represent uh this application?
Good day, good evening, everyone. This is Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Surveying Associates. Ten fifty-four Boston Post Road in Guilford, Connecticut, uh for the record. Um, if I'm, I'm not sure who's in charge of putting up plans tonight. Um, but if someone can put up the proposed site plan. I, I do not have the ability to share, unfortunately, on my laptop. Um, I'm, I'm working on that, but, you know, I'm technology deprived, sorry. Um, but anyways, um, we are proposing to. Oh, there we go. We are proposing to put in an accessory structure. Uh, in the um. Further back from the road than the existing building, um adjacent to the existing driveway. And it will be a proposed garage and a one, one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. Um. We fit all of the zoning criteria. Um, but the special permit comes in to play that we are over seven hundred fifty square feet. Of the footprint of the building. Um, it fits in all aspects of the zoning code. As to the um square footage in relation to the. Uh, existing house is a one-bedroom unit. It is setback from the road further than the existing house. More of the existing house fits within the. Uh, required setback than not. As you can see, probably about seventy-five percent of the house is within the front setback. We are setback, um, well beyond the uh required front setback for zoning. Well beyond the side setback for zoning. Uh, we have a stormwater system. That handles the increase in impervious system. We have a code compliant septic system for both the house and the accessory dwelling unit. Going into one septic system, which has been approved by the local health. Department and also approved by the state for a central septic system. So I, I think that will be read into the record at a later point. Um, another thing I need to note is the landscaping between the road. And this. There is exist- existing landscaping between the road and where this building will be. And we propose to maintain that. Um, I, who is uh working the um, who's working the screen shares tonight?
Nigel.
That's Nigel. Uh Nigel, if you can pull up, please, the pictures that I submitted. Um, picture number two is probably either two or three is probably the most important to show.
I'm not sure which of these it might be, but just go.
Uh, no, no, go back. Go back one step. And posted signs. They, they are in the posted signs folder. So, so that is one view of the landscaping, and if you can go to picture two, please. That shows the basic relationship of. Where the existing driveway is and the retaining wall and the landscaping. Between the existing wall and the road, and could you go to picture three, please? So, um, picture three shows the existing driveway. And the yard, which is pretty much open lawn. There's a couple of trees that are going to be have to, they're going to have to come out. Um, as part of the construction of the plan. But all of the vegetation that you see between. The existing driveway and the roadway that will be maintained. So we do have a existing uh landscaping buffer between. The road and the proposed building. Um, and if you could go back to the plan now, please. So to the, to the rear of the building, there are numerous sheds. Uh, that exists on the property which are proposed to be removed. So, um, in doing this project. A few trees are going to be removed. Those sheds and the decks are coming out. So, um, it's a trade-off of impervious area. The increase in impervious area is being captured in a stormwater system. To the west of the buildings, uh close proximate to the property line. Um. And I think that's it in a nutshell. We, we fit all the zoning regulations. Other than we are over seven hundred fifty square feet in area. So that is why we are beyond, before you for a special permit.
Uh, is the, are you proposing that the driveway will continue to be gravel?
Yes.
Any other questions from commissioners right away? Um, Steve, do you have any, anything else you want to speak to on this?
Yeah, I submitted a memo for the record. That was very brief. It was dated July fourteenth, but my only real comment about the application at this time is just that. I thought the architectural plans that were submitted were insufficient to be able to determine the zoning compliance of the structure. Especially with regard to the height and the average grade. Uh, that, that's my only comment at this time.
Oh, and, and I'd like to note that the uh, the sketches that were provided from my client. Are just conceptual. Um, we will tweak those. I've talked to him about roof pitches and so forth. And we will make sure that we are zoning compliant with height. Um, so, so he, he came up with a rough sketch of what he wanted to do. But I said to him, we need to make sure that we are compliant with height. So that will be, there will be more. Uh, accurate depictions of this building once we get approved. He didn't want to spend the money on an architect or designer had he not been approved. So, you know, we are, before he goes for a building permit, we are going to come in with. Proper plan showing that we do fit zoning for height.
Scott, quick question?
Yeah, so.
Um, is this in a flood zone?
It is partially in a flood zone. Um, the building itself that we are proposing. Is within a flood zone, which is why we have it elevated to the elevation that we have it elevated at. And it will be a slab on grade on a stem wall construction, so we do not need flood vents. Um, we, I, I've talked to my client about it. We may explore. The possibility of filling. The property to the point where we are out of the flood zone and doing a. Loma based on fill situation. To get out of the flood zone, it is an AE coastal flood zone, so we are able to fill it. To get it out of the flood zone, so if we choose to. But um, every aspect of this proposed construction is FEMA flood compliant. Um, we do have the required one foot above the flood zone. Freeboard for both the garage and the apartment. And as I stated, it is a slab on grade. Uh, stem wall construction, so uh flood vents are not required for this. But yes, it is in a flood zone.
Okay, um, we, we have some, yeah, Steve.
Scott, I just wanted to um elaborate on my comment previously about the special permit and the architectural plans. And that I think the commission needs to review architectural plans as well as specifically what Todd said about the grading. And the potential for uh filling this property to elevate the. The uh proposed structure out of the flood zone. I think that's specifically what the commission should be regulating when they're reviewing the special permit, and I think that's supported. By the standards in section two seventy-three eighty for special permit requirements that say the location type, character, size of use. Uh, uh, and of any building or other structure in connection therein shall be in harmony with and conform with the appropriate orderly development of the town and the neighborhood. Um, as well as the nature and location of the use in any building or other structure and connection therewith shall. Be such that uh there will be adequate access for fire protection. The, the architectural design. Uh, and style of all buildings and other structures to be erected on the lot shall be as. Shall be such as not to conflict with the architectural design and style of adjacent property. So. I'm, I'm going on the record saying that I don't think the town should. Uh, approve it without any uh more sufficient architectural rendings, renderings or understanding about what the grading on the site is going to be. Thanks.
All right, thanks.
Well, well, if I may, my retort to that is. I, my client did not want to spend the additional expense to have. An architect design this building. Uh, if it were not to be approved, which. Um, as case in point, for most of my applications, we come in with a rendering. Of what we hope to do, and then follow it up with architectural plans. Uh, for building permits and so forth. Because if we do not get approved, why are you going to spend thousands of dollars on an architect to design a building? And then that is a waste. So we, we gave you a. Uh, rendering of what it is going to look like. And Nigel, if you can pull up the picture that I sent you of the concept building. That might suffice the commission to know what my client is looking to build. It's not the exact building he wants to build, but it is a concept. Yep, that's the one. Th- this is what he's hoping to build, something that looks like this. It's a. Country barn look. Um, thi- this one has a door on the front. Obviously, he's not going to have a door on the front. Um, he's not going to have a barn door on the side. But this is a concept of what he wants to build. Something that looks Guilford friendly, um, tall garage door, tall eve on the front. Um, sloping eve to the back of the building. Not as steep as a roof as this, because this building obviously. Probably has a twenty-two foot high roof. He's going to have a shallower roof than that to fit the um. Height limitations in the zone that he's in, but, you know. A garage front coming to a uh sloped roof coming up, going back. And then a shallow pitched roof on top of that apartment in the back. Um, so this is just a concept picture of what he's proposing.
Yeah, I understand, Todd. It's a, it's a chicken and egg issue, correct? And, and, I mean, the, it's. It's difficult for us to, to, you know, render a decision if it's not a complete application. Um, I, I understand the concern about not wanting to spend money on the design, but spending money on the design. Is the reason why it would get approved because, um, you know, you could. Make sure the entire application conforms with the zoning code before you come before the commission. Um. Let's, we have a few uh memos that we should read into the record from uh town staff. Could you bring those up, Nigel, please? Uh, Philip Johnson, could you read the first one from uh? Uh, from Janus Plazniak?
Uh, would, that would be the engineer memo?
Yes, he's bringing it up right now.
Thank you, uh, to Planning and Zoning from Janice A. Plazniak, PE Town Engineer, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, fifty-four Water Street. Special permit application. The proposed del- development is within the AE ten special flood hazard area. The new structure with a first floor elevation of eleven point five feet and a garage floor elevation of eleven. All built on a stem wall system is flood compliant. The proposed stormwater management system is designed to handle the one-inch water quantity volume. The increases in impervious area, the system should be inspected. And an as-built provided erosion control measures should be installed around the proposed disturbed areas of the site. And inspected by the Z E O before start of construction.
Um, Todd, are you showing erosion control measures on your drawings?
Yes, we are.
Uh, the next memo is from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Could we get um Frank to read this one?
No problem. Um, this is July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. I, I don't need it that big. Okay. All right, special permit um from Kevin Me, environmental planner, special permit, Ryan and Aaron Conley, fifty-four Water Street, Guilford, Connecticut, zero, six, four, three, seven. Assessors map thirty-two lot seventy-one. The applicant is proposing to construct a two-car garage with an attached accessory apartment. The plan provides for roof water to be discharged to an underground infiltration gallics. The site plan does not show any erosion and sedimentation control measures. The stormwater drainage system and. Water street discharges to the West River. In order to make sure that the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, revised plan should be submitted showing at a minimum sedimentation erosion control along the west side of the property and on Water Street. Two, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures. Prior to site construction, soil stockpile should be contained by soap fencing and or hay bale. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measure shall be maintained. Until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. Uh, the town of Guil- three, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement should be notified to inspect the underground infiltration system.
Was there a four? What was the date of that letter? I can't see it on this view.
July fourteenth.
That, that was, that was done. I revised the plans that same day. Which you should have revised plans online. Um, dated that same day, July fourteenth, where I added the erosion control measures. And I met with Kevin that afternoon about them. Um, unfortunately, he did not revise his letter. Um, but I do have a revised plan on that day. Uh, unfortunately, I had that layer turned off on my plan when I printed them and submitted them to the town. But we did have the erosion controls on the plan. Um, it just would, didn't get printed out. So. The revised plans dated July fourteenth, same day, do have the erosion control measures. Um, and if I may, at this juncture. Um, on many of the applications that I have done in the past. We have come in with conceptual plans. Um, showing footprints and elevations sketched by our clients. And have not been required to have fully architectural plans drafted and done. Um, based on the same reason why I'm stating of the expense of having those done. So I'm hoping that the commission agrees with our position of. Going by the concept, conceptual plans. And Nigel, if you could pull up the um plans that my client submitted for. The floor plans and elevations. Um, just to give an overall view of his concept. Maybe the commission will change their view on. Uh, requiring us to have fully architectural engineer plans right at this moment.
I, I just want to make clear, Todd, that my comment was not to require architecturally stamped plans, but to. For you to submit a draft rendering of the building with elevations, not that it needs to be stamped. I think that's pretty standard.
Wait, which, which we submitted. Um, that is the floor plan of the building. Uh, Nigel, if you can go to the elevation plans that I submitted. Please. So this, thi- this is the basic concept of the plan where the front of the garage. Um, comes up, there is a taller roof above. The garage and then it's similar to the picture. That was shown as the concept plan, the peak of the roof will happen. Uh, towards the back of the garage, come down, and then a moderate pitch above the apartment area of the dwelling. Um, and all, all of this will be designed to be less than. The maximum allowed uh height of the building.
Yeah, but Todd, there's, there's still elevations on this plant, on this drawing.
This, this rendering doesn't have any, any scale on it. It, it's a con- it's a concept plan, but when we go for the building permit, if, if this were to get approved through your commission. It still has to go through zoning and the building department to get approved.
Has to go through the building department, but the building department doesn't have to check elevation.
Zoning has to check everything to do with zoning, height and location.
Right, we are the zoning.
Yeah.
The building permit isn't check, is it going to check that?
But to get a zoning permit to build this structure, we need to ensure that it is at the prescribed height.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, confused. I mean, we've.
Scott, maybe.
Think I've seen it. Go ahead, Ted.
Look, I, I, I mean, personally, I, I'm favorably inclined towards this application. But I'm looking at a conceptual drawing. But the conceptual drawing doesn't have a single number on it. I have no idea if this is three hundred feet high or three inches high. And so this isn't very helpful to me. Uh, and, and I, 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 I'm not comfortable with the idea. That this will all get worked out later. I, I think this, you have to submit something that, that we can act on.
Secondly, uh, Todd, your comments about whether or not the elevation of the floor has to change like that needs to get decided. Before we finalize our decision too. I mean, otherwise, we could make a decision, but if you're going to change the, the elevation height of the floor, you would have to come back anyway. So doesn't it move you between now and the next meeting to finalize that design?
No, Scott, the elevation of the floor of the building is not going to change. What I was saying is we may change the grading around the building. To take the. structure out of the flood zone. That more than likely is not going to happen. More than likely, we're building it exactly as it's planned. But that floor elevation is set. That is not going to go up any higher. We do not need to raise the building to get it out of the flood. It's already flood compliant. We are above the elevation needed to be flood compliant. It's the grading around the building that may change, but more than likely probably not. And for as long as I have been doing these, um we have come in before this commission with conceptual plans like this, knowing that we are under the scrutiny of the zoning department when we come in for a building permit. And when we go for a C O, we have to have an as-built, have to have it located and elevated. If it's too high, you don't get your C O. That it's it's
Todd, I I don't again, we don't, I don't agree with this. There's not.
Is nothing that I've ever done before.
Maybe, but I I'm not comfortable with this, Scott.
I I'd agree. Is anyone else have a difference of opinion on the on the commission?
I I don't have a difference of opinion, but I would say that, you know, all projects are gonna cost money and I appreciate if it weren't approved, that that would be seen as a waste, but you know, obviously, think of it as an investment in order to try and get it approved.
Right, that's exactly the point I made at the beginning of this.
Now.
Kevin, what do you think?
No, I
You muted yourself, Kevin.
I thought I was muted. I thought I unmuted myself. Sorry. I'm in agreement with all of you. So nothing.
We have, we have one other uh one other memo from um the health inspector. I guess we'll have Ted read this one.
Okay. Okay, to Planning and Zoning Commission from Victoria Davis, Environmental Health Inspector, uh, July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Reeve Ryan P. and Aaron M. Conley, fifty-four Water Street, map thirty-two's lot seventy-one, zone R three, special permit to construct a two-car garage and accessory dwelling unit with a footprint above seven hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet. An engineering subservive disposal plan was submitted to the health department June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three for review of a new code-compliant septic system for an existing four-bedroom house and a proposed one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit and two-car garage. Plan review comments were sent here on July twelfth. Approval is contingent upon revision to the engineer plan and review and approval from D H D P H for the central system exemption. Victoria Davis, Environmental Health Inspector.
Thanks. Um, Todd, were those revisions made updated on your drawings as well? When you revised your drawings? Thank you.
Yes.
Um, all right, any following questions from commissioners?
Yeah, one one quick one, Scott, if you don't mind. As far as um precedence goes for you guys, you veterans who've been on here for a while, is it true what what Todd is saying though, but the precedent has been set not to have?
Not not to my recollection to this little amount of information. No, not for a special permit.
Okay, and as well as in a year and a half that I will thereabouts that I've been with the with the town, I've always requested elevation drawings and um, I I'm just gonna, if I can't actually share, but um I have an example of one that I'd care to share. Um, but usually it just says the elevations in in terms of the the data that the the finished floor area is and then where the top of the structure is, what the grade is, et cetera, on on the building. I can recall one on Church Street I think we looked at and another one that was submitted for an accessory apartment.
Right. Um, any further questions for commissioners? Is there any questions from the from the public? Uh, if you're muted, you'll you can raise your hand through the Zoom platform if you have a question. Um, or raise your hand in person if you're there in the meeting room. Uh, and would anyone like to speak uh in favor of this application? And would anyone like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none. All right, um. Anyone like to, I mean, I I'm I'm sorry, Todd, I understand your 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 position.
Well, if 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 you guys, if you guys are adamant about having fully engineered
That's not what we're saying, and that's not, that's not what Steve said.
Then let me, then let me continue this to next meeting and I'll see what I can put together with my client in the next couple of weeks and come back to you with a proper plan that you wanna see.
Todd, please, Todd, please listen to what Steve said. He did not ask for fully stamped and and signed drawings. He asked for something specific and that's so please just listen to what he's suggesting, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone like to continue this to our next meeting, which is um August?
Second.
Sorry, second.
Motion to continue?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Phil Johnson?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Um, that concludes our public hearing section of one one to the regular meeting. Um, next item on the agenda, Todd K. Anderson, Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates, five thirty-nine Boston Street, map forty-nine, lot ten A, zone R three subdivision and coastal site plan to officially establish a lot as part of the Sanzoni property. Advocate requested the table on the twenty-first, and now it is July fifth nineteen. Todd?
Good evening, everyone. Um, for the record, Todd Anderson, Anderson Engineering uh associates, ten fifty-four Boston Post Road in Guilford. Um, this was tabled from the last meeting because it was inadvertently put on your agenda prior to the inland wetlands commission meeting for their subdivision uh referral because there is an off-site wetland um about sixty feet offsite on the um Guilford Motel property. Um, so this was a leftover parcel of land from a two-part subdivision that we did back in the nineties and early two thousands, I think. Um, we split off uh two or three other properties um from this property. And then subsequently split one of those properties into two um by a variance application um because there was insufficient um land area for those two properties. So this was a leftover um vacant piece of land in the back of all those properties. Initially, back in the late eighties, early nineties, we had a site development plan that we did that showed this property being uh potentially two separate lots in the back, which is why we had the twenty-foot strip of land going out to Boston Street. Now we are taking
Uh, site plan, please.
Do.
Yeah, if you can pull up the nineteen ninety-four site plan first, the nineteen ninety-four site development plan.
Would that be the recorded subdivision?
Um, I think it, I think it's the site development plan. It says nineteen ninety-four on it.
I don't see any plans with
No, that that's the current one. Um.
It's this.
We'll go back to your file here.
No, this is not it.
It's it's labeled five thirty-nine Boston Street Site Plans nineteen ninety-four S D P.
So so that is our site development plan from back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, what is shown on here is lots two and three are the subject of the matter tonight. So we split off lot one back in, I think, the late eighties and then left the what's called the other land of Sanzoni, map forty-nine lot ten. That was left out. That was our first split of the property. And then on this application in nineteen ninety-four, we split off what is called lot four for Robinson Zoni. And we left the proposed lots two and three out of the subdivision. Um, that was not subdivided into two lots. It was a errant um piece of property left out which still exists today. So our only intent now is to um make those that lot two and three, which are not lot lot two and three, it's a vacant piece of land, which basically has enough area to be two lots. But it is a vacant piece of land which is leftover from the subdivision of lots one and four and that front piece that you see on the plan as other land of Sanzoni. Um, our only intent is to make that rear land viable as a buildable lot. We explored every avenue of trying to come up with how we deem this a buildable lot. The only thing that we came up with was we have to go through subdivision approval. It's obviously a existing piece of property, but it's part of a subdivision. But it's a leftover from a subdivision. How do we make that a viable piece of property? I tried going to the health department and saying, okay, we have test holes on here. Can you deem it a viable piece of property? No, you have to go to Plains Zone. So here we are, before you to make this a viable piece of property and build a house on. Um, where it was proposed to be two lots before, we are proposing one lot. One house, one lot in a double-sized piece of property. Um, we have the approval from wetlands because there are um adjacent wetlands to the east of the property offsite. They have given our blessing to build one house in this property. Um, the other part of this is um and actually Nigel, if you can go to my current plan on the maybe the site development plan might be best.
So. I'll have to
Yes, thank you. So as you can see, we are proposing one house kind of in the middle of the property. Um, the hundred-foot wetland setback line is shown on the plan. We are doing nothing within the hundred-foot setback of the wetlands. So what was proposed back in the eighties and nineties as being two lots? We're proposing one house on that double-sized piece of property. Um, we do have a well exception from the uh State Department of Health to put a well in for this property. So we show a proposed well. Um, they granted that because of the distance from Boston Street to run in the waterline. Um, Dan Johnson got that well exception back. Um, I forget how many years ago, but a long time ago.
Thousand sixteen.
Thank you.
Yep.
But um we do have a code-compliant septic system on the property. Um, and again, it is a double-sized lot. So there was comment about fee and lieu of open space. Um, I do know, and I talked to my father about this, Eric Anderson. Um, back in either the late eighties or early nineties, he couldn't remember when, but he knows that he did ask the commission for an exemption of open space requirements back when we were proposing two lots in the back there. And he said that it was granted. I cannot find any record of that paperwork, whether it was granted or not. But I am asking the commission tonight to grant that exception again, being that this is uh basically a double-sized lot. We could come before you right now and ask for a subdivision of two lots. But we are only asking for the commission to grant us one buildable lot on the front. So um I am asking for a variance on requiring the fee and lieu of open space. Um, every other part of the application fits zoning. Um, we have a driveway entrance to Boston Street approved by D O T um which those plans have been submitted to the town. Um, I think Janice might have a letter stating um something to do with that effect. We have the soil erosion controls and the grading plan which uh town staff has asked for. So we fit in all aspects of zoning engineering aspects, uh health department aspects. Um, the only thing we don't have is the open space, which I'm asking for a waiver of that. So um I think at this point I'm open for any questions.
Thanks. Any immediate questions from commissioners?
I I don't understand the concept of of why there needs to be a a a a open space or fee and lieu and why we would give an exception here. I can somebody give me some background on that?
Yep, Steve, can you comment further, please?
Yeah, there's very limited uh criteria in the subdivision regulations for why you should waive a subdivision uh open space. And I'll read you the section because it's very brief. It says waiver of open space dedication provisions of this section requiring the dedication of open space shall not apply to certain subdivisions as provided in Connecticut General Statute, section twenty-five, eight dash twenty-five. Furthermore, any provision of this section may be waived by the commission upon a three-fourths vote of the commission. So there's there's really, there's really no criteria that's established. Um, in in my memo, I I supported that. I I stated that I don't support um a waiver of open space here. I think a fee and lieu of is the um sensible option in this scenario. Um, and I'm also not certain that you could apply for two lots uh in a subdivision in this case. Um, because a shared driveway can only serve three lots in Guilford. And I believe it would already be serving three lots if you created one lot here. So I I mean, I could be wrong on that, but that's that's my review of the situation. Um, and I I don't think you could have a fourth lot on the driveway without reconfiguring the whole driveway situation.
Well, so, well, what is the subdivision on file with the town clerk show?
So I I have that. If I could share my screen.
You should be able to.
Um, I'm disabled.
I'm stopping sharing.
Okay.
Yeah, Nigel, can you uh open up sharing, please?
Nope, it's shared, or it's not shared, but. It's sharing. You should be able to share it out.
Okay. So there's a couple of different subdivisions. I believe this is the most recent one. And this is signed by the Plains only cushion director of health dated two thousand.
Alright, so you don't you don't think there's any subdivision application that was more recent than this?
No, I think this is definitely the most recent one. It shows the lots in their current configuration now. So th- this subdivision, like Todd said, split off this lot number four here.
So. So. So basically, as far as we're concerned, then this is a. Uh. And a revision of the subdivision application that's on file, right?
So I I think.
A new subdivision application.
I think this is a new subdivision application, and I actually ran that by um, our attorney Chuck Andres as well to confirm. Um, I've been reviewing this property for the past maybe year. Um, it was my recommendation for them to go back as well as. Uh, Chucks to go back for a subdivision application to legitimize this lot as a building lot. So I think a subdivision is the appropriate application here, definitely.
Whi- which is why we're before you. Um, but Steve, if I may, if I may correct.
Open space.
If if I may correct, on this subdivision plan here. It says twenty foot right of way in favor of lots one and four. That right of way to lot one was negated. And deeded back. To the sun zonies, lot one does not have rights to that twenty foot right of way. So, um. You know. If.
So they should have come backed up to revise their subdivision then.
Well, maybe. But. It was done legally through deeds and so forth. And you know what the attorneys did, they did. I don't know. Um, but anyways, on the land records, lot one does not have rights to that twenty foot right of way. So you know, my client currently could come in with a um. Plan to divide that property in the rear. To two lots and have three lots served by that driveway. The two lots in the back and lot four, because lot one does not have rights to that right of way. Um, the houses on what is shown is other land of Sanzoni. George Sanzoni and Thomas Sanzoni, those two houses. Um, we. By active variance, we split those into two properties. They were made to put in their own driveway out to Boston Street just a couple of years ago. So they do not have access to that right of way as well. So right now. Um, as it's proposed. Lot four and that remaining land in the back. Which is the subject of this application are the only two properties that have access to that driveway. So we could, we could actually split that rear property. Into two lots, but we are not proposing that at this point.
Well, so Steve, I I guess the only follow up question on that then Steve is. Is it when you're talking about the the, when you're setting the zoning code about the three. Lots off of a driveway, is it say right away, or does it say literally? Folks using a drive. Like, how does that work?
Says, can you see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, it says driveway serving more than three lots are prohibited and are not subject to waiver.
Yes.
So you so Todd, there's still a driveway serving that fourth, if if it like. I I'm not trying to semantics or anything, but there's literally a driveway serving that lot. Correct? Or does it have its own driveway?
No, that that driveway that right now, there is not a driveway off of Boston Street. That serves that rare land. They will need to construct that driveway. Right now, right now, lot four is served off of a driveway. That is on that house to the east, right on Boston Street. As you, as you can see right there. That drive, that house to the east right there. There is a driveway that goes out to Boston Street. They have deeded rights to use that driveway to get to their house. We do not have deeded rights to get to that rear land. So we need to build a new driveway. That house to the west where this aerial view does not show a driveway out to Boston Street. There has been in the last year and a half to two years. There has been a driveway constructed from that house out to Boston Street. Which is the exclusive use of five thirty five Boston Street. And. No, nobody else has rights to use that driveway.
Can you explain what we're looking at a little bit better, Steve? So.
Yeah, these are the, these are the subject property. So. What Todd is saying is that this, the the subject lot, which is this one here, this is the right of way going all the way back. I'm sorry, it's the it's the the land strip going all the way back. This dr- this lot has to construct the driveway going out to Boston Street because it does not have. Rights over this easement to pass here. And also, um. This dr- this lot, Todd, you're saying the homeowner has constructed the driveway as required. Connecting to Boston Street. So this, so this shared right of ways is being utilized by. Um. Uh, this rear lot, the subject lot of the application. This lot, which is the existing five forty one Boston Street at this time. So that's where you're saying you could have. A split, a double lot here because.
Yes. Yes.
That's that's fine. If that's if you wanted that to be our application, that's fine. Alright, I yeah, I didn't see.
What we are, what we are not proposing is but that rear property.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, so Todd. I'm sorry, go ahead, Todd.
Go ahead, you're up, Kevin.
So Todd, are you, are you requesting a waiver from both requirements?
No, just the open space.
No, I know, but you don't want to, but you you don't want to pay the fee either.
Well, yes. Well, I'm I'm asking the commission. I'm asking the commission to waive. The open space and fee in lieu of requirements. On this property, which has existed for over twenty years. Um, actually probably closer to thirty years. That initially was. Part of a grand plan of a subdivision of this property, which back. In the day. Uh, my father says he was granted a waiver of open space. Requirements. Yet unfortunately, I can't find the paperwork for that. I wish I could, but I can't.
Sure, but if if that were the case, it would have been as part of the application uh, that Steve brought up, which. Didn't have this lot being buildable. It would have been part of the subdivision application that made buildable lots.
That was, that was a. Um, the two lots in the back there were part of a site development plan. That was presented to the commission. Back in the eighties and nineties. And yes, that is not a filed subdivision map. Is a conceptual plan, which was presented the commission back in the eighties and nineties. So yes, those are not on file in the town clerk's office. But if you dug through the files of. Plan zoning. You may find them if they still exist. Um. But you know. We we have records of them. They were submitted as part of our subdivision applications back in the eighties and nineties. Um, but no, they are not filed in the land records. So they're, you know, obviously they're not a subdivision map, but they're a conceptual plan. That was submitted to the commission way back when.
Alright, well, we have some memos to read, but uh, yeah, Steve, you.
Sorry, I I just wanted to raise a point that I I don't know when the town actually adopted. Uh, fee in lieu of regulations or when that became permitted by statute. But there's also the scenario that. Um. The town just didn't have fee in lieu of regulations at the time of of the prior subdivision as well, which is why they granted a waiver. Um, that I know this is all unknowns. And then there's the all, the other point that is that. If you, I haven't verified that a second lot could even be built on this lot. I, you know, I I think you're very aware of the regulations and what could and could not be. Constructed and permitted. But with that said. If you're saying they can, there's nothing stopping from somebody coming in with a subdivision regula- uh, subdivision application later on and applying. For a second lot, and then they're only subject to a fee in lieu or of uh, you know, a smaller property.
Well, well, at that point, they would be subject to a fee in lieu of. The same amount of property that is before you now. So if we have a single vacant piece of property that is worth. Say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you're asking for ten percent of that. When we come back in, if we come back in and they want to split that in half. It's still the same hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of property. It's not that we are, we're not creating. Another lot right now. All we are doing right now is deeming. A single piece of property that is not deemed a building lot. We're deeming it a viable building. We're not dividing that piece of property. So if if someone were to buy this property. And go to somebody else and say, hey. I have enough property to make two building lots. Let's make it two and come back before you. Then absolutely you guys have all authority in the world to say, hey. It's hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of property. Which is before you right now. Let's charge a fee in lieu of because you want to divide it into. We're just taking an existing piece of property and trying to turn it into a viable building lot. We're not creating any new property. It's an existing prob.
Steve, what's, since you have it open, what's the assessed value of that lot?
Uh.
Hundred and forty one thousand, one hun- hundred forty thousand, one hundred. That's the appraised value, assessed value is ninety eight thousand seventy.
Yeah, didn't we, we did it over space based off the assessed value, right, Phil? Or was it?
Correct.
Off the appraised. I think it was off the assessed value.
It's assessed.
Yeah, we typically require a third party appraisal.
Alright.
Uh, well, so Steve, we, what we've been doing in the past is there, this wasn't really well divided and designed. Described in our regulations. So what we started doing was just leaning on the town assessment as the third party.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So in this case, that would be ninety eight K, you said, Phil?
Eighty nine.
Uh, ninety eight thousand seventy dollars.
Alright. Okay, um. Then I. Guess I'll take the temperature of commission here. You know, where are you leaning in terms of? Fee and move on this item. Anyone want to take a stab at their feelings first?
I I I I'm sorry, I don't see a reason why we should waive this. I mean, if if the fact that Todd. Father thinks that there was a time when it was waived. Uh, that's, I I mean, I, that's interesting. But. I mean. There's no proof of this. And uh, I, short of that proof, I don't see any basis for for waiving.
Uh, Kevin?
I I just didn't think from the way Steve read it, that waiving was an option.
Well, we can waive it with a three quarters vote.
Yeah, it takes a three quarters vote.
I missed that part, okay, um.
To waive it. And there's no, there's no real stipulations as to why we decided to do it. I will say I, as long as I've been on the commission, we haven't waived it.
And and if I, and if I may. Um, I think open space has been required in the state of Connecticut. Since around nineteen seventy eight to nineteen eighty. Um, but I would have to look that up. So.
But that, that's also not fee in lieu though. Fee in lieu is a separate section.
Right, uh, Phil, what are you, what are you thinking?
I'm not inclined to waive it. Frankly, I I think we've. We've asked for this fee from lots of different developers. Um, and I think. We should be even handed in the treatment of that.
Okay, uh, Frank.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Alright, um, so it looks like we're not going to entertain that part, Todd. Uh, let's move on to uh, memos from town staff. First one is Shirley Minkins. Um, engineer. We'll have uh, Kevin read this one.
So. Do you mean?
Oh, right. Uh, to P and C commission from Shirley Mickens, vegeters and a tanner in July fourteenth, twenty twenty three. R E five thirty nine Boston Street map forty nine lot ten A. An engineer plan was submitted to the health department depicting a four bedroom, single family residential home with a new subsurface sewage disposal system and private well. Soil testing was completed in two thousand sixteen and the lot contains adequate soils for sewage disposal system. An exception was granted by the Department of Public Health drinking water section to allow one drill well on the site rather than connect to the public water supply on Boston Street. The health department did a cursory review of the plan and will be able to approve the engineer plan following minor revisions. Shirley Mickens.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um. The next item we have here is uh, it's just a copy of the memo that Todd mentioned from Dennis Johnson about the well permit. So. I don't think we need to read that into the record. It's. For understanding where that came from. Um, there's a memo from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Let's roll back around to uh, Phil, if you could read this one.
Sure, uh. Thank you. Uh, R E Sanzoni property, five thirty nine Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven assessors map forty nine lot ten A. The applicant is looking to get. A subdivided one point three five acre parcel land. Of a previous subdivision approved as a building lot, the applicant has completed. The checklist to guide low impact development dash best management practices and is utilizing several of the recommended practices. The plan shows that the roof water from the four bedroom house. Will be discharged into an underground stormwater infiltration system that revised plans dated July twelfth. Twenty twenty three, so sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with two seven three dash nine seven B subsection six of the zoning regulations. This project should have no adverse impacts to the coastal resources as long as it's developed. In accordance to the site development plan dated July twelfth, twenty twenty three. Inland. Inland wetlands are located off the property with sections of upland review area located on the eastern portion of the property. At the inland wetlands meeting dated July twelfth, twenty twenty three, the commission referred favorably to the planning and zoning commission, the subdivision shown. On plans prepared by Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates. Record subdivision map section C Sanzoni property, Boston Street Guilford, Connecticut dated June eighth, twenty twenty three. And last revised July tenth, twenty twenty three, in site development and coastal area management plan section C. Sanzoni property, Boston Street Guilford, Connecticut dated June eighth, twenty twenty three, and last revised July twelfth, twenty twenty three. With the conditions that one erosion and sedimentation controls be installed as shown on the site. Development and coastal area management plan section C Sanzoni property. Boston Street Guilford, Connecticut dated June eighth, twenty twenty three, and last revised July twelfth, twenty twenty three. Two, no work to be conducted within the inland wetlands commission one hundred foot upland regulated review area without permit from inland wetlands commission. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, erosion and sediment controls be installed as shown on site development and coastal area management. Plan section C Sanzoni property, Boston Street Guilford, Connecticut dated June eighth, twenty twenty three. And last revised July twelfth, twenty twenty three. Two, the town of Guilford zoning involve enforcement officer should be notified to inspect sedimentation. And erosion control measures prior to the site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silk fencing or hay bales. Erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established. Or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, storm water from the roof should be infiltrated in accordance with the site plan development.
Thank you. Um, Steve, any other items for discussion on this?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I wanted to share that I I the plans, the submitted site development plan and the subdivision plan should be. Yeah, I wanted to share that I, uh, the plans, the submitted site development plan and the subdivision plan should be signed by the engineer and surveyor of record. Um, I've shared my other comments, but I want to point out one additional thing that I neglected to denote in my memo, which is that the applicant has stated, not in writing, but as part of the meeting tonight, that they're requesting a waiver um, under the subdivision regulations for, uh, the lot not to be served by public water supply. And the subdivision regulations two seventy two dash thirty one do allow this, um, but they state a couple things. They state that when the proposed subdivision is fewer than five lots, the commission may vote to waive the requirement of public water supply with written concurrence of the director of health and the town engineer pursuant to approval of test well results as well as a site plan for each building, for each lot indicating the location of the proposed house, well and septic system prepared by a licensed professional engineer, which has been done. Uh, such waiver may be granted by the commission upon written request by the applicant in a three, three quarters of vote of all members of the commission and when the waiver will have no significant adverse effect on adjacent property or on public health and safety. So I want to point out two things with regard to that, but the request for a waiver was not made in writing, as far as I can tell. And the town engineer's memo that was submitted in the record does not, um, it does not recommend, uh, a well. It, it says that the lot should be connected to public water supply. So I think that needs to be clarified with the town engineer as well.
Right, so yeah, one of the stipulations you had on there was that the town engineer had to approve it. I mean, obviously Dennis Johnson wrote a memo however long ago. Um, but what you're saying is you think it needs to be cleared with the current one?
Yeah, because they actually put in writing in there, and well, Janice put in her memo that the lot should be connected to, um, public water supply. I'm not sure if she knew that there was that well exemption that was granted by the health department, but I think these, this needs to be clarified.
Right, so her memo needs to be, uh, revised. Or she needs to look at it and then either agree or not, right?
Yep.
Um, and then we got to formally do the, uh, request for waiver. Okay, um, so it's your recommendation then that we, uh, continue this to our August second meeting, uh, in order for some of those items to be handled?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, sure, if you have it. Thanks. Um, Frank, you have this one?
Yep. Planning and zoning commission, uh, Janice Plaziac, our PE town engineer, dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty three at five thirty nine Boston Street subdivision. The proposed subdivision is providing access to the lot from Boston Street with a new driveway to be approved and permitted by Connecticut DOT. Permit from the Connecticut DOT shall be obtained prior to the start of construction. The new sidewalks built along the frontage will have to be rebuilt during the new driveway construction. I recommend a condition of approval that the driveway be paved in the area of the new construction on the plan developed by uh, PHI Pi Engineering LLC to prevent gravel from washing down to the sidewalk since it will be steeper than eight percent. The proposed stormwater management system is designed to handle the one inch water quality volume for the increase on impervious area. The system should be inspected and an as-built be provided. Erosion control measures are shown on the plan and should be inspected by the Z E O before the start of construction. A proposed well is shown on the lot. Public water is available in Boston Street. Therefore, the house should be connected to the Connecticut Water System. Underground electric and communication utility should be brought into the lot as well. Utilities are not shown on the map, but will likely need to be brought in underground in the new driveway.
Um, Todd, do you have, have you been able to update your drawings based off what she's asking for? Any statement about the sidewalks that she mentioned?
Uh, the sidewalks are mentioned on my plans, um. We do not show the location of them, but the, uh, location of them um, is noted on the plan as to, we have to replace the sidewalk. Right now they are a four inch thick sidewalk. We have to replace that with an eight inch thick sidewalk entrance for the driveway. Um, so obviously we have to excavate out the existing driveway or, uh, existing sidewalk and replace that with an eight inch thick sidewalk. So there are notes on my plan, uh, to that effect that that needs to occur. Um, the driveway design done by Pi Engineering, um, references a two, two percent grade coming off, in off the road, which is concurrent with the sidewalk that was built by the town. So that will fit, um, it was not part of my contract to revise their drawings or provide, um, construction drawings for that driveway that was approved by DOT. Um, but I talked to Janice about this after her memo, memo. And she said, yes, it will fit. We can make it work. Um, Pi Engineering's plans actually call for a two percent grade to the highway line, which is not, uh, required by the town. So they actually went above and beyond what was required. So it will fit with the current sidewalk layout. And it's above and beyond the level design um, to get this driveway to work. But I did not do any driveway design plans at Boston Street.
Okay, uh, and then her other comment about undergrounds, are those noted on your plans or no?
Uh, the underground electric, we did not note that on our plans. Um, quite honestly, that is up to the utility company. Um, as to how they want to service this property, uh, we typically do not show that on our plans. Because the utility companies come in and they do what they want. Um, but that will have to happen, uh, within the right of way that is provided to the lot. Um, as far as the water line, um, obviously, so what she was not aware of when she drafted that memo.
Okay. Alright, um, Nigel or Steve, anything else on this application?
Nope.
Alright, um, commissioners or, um, are we looking to follow the recommendation and continue this the second? If so, does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved. Move to the August second meeting, continue this.
Uh, Kim Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Philip Johnson?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
I know, but yes. Um, thanks, Todd. Uh, Steve's memo, Todd spells out pretty clearly what, what's, you know, being looked for on this, so. That should be good direction.
Alright.
Alright. Next item on our agenda, see, we've got a new application to receive and set public hearing for. It's William Kern, three eighty two Northwood Drive, map one oh six, lot seventy dash forty one, zone R eight, special permit to construct a one thousand one hundred and twenty five square foot garage. Receive a set public hearing date for August second, twenty twenty three. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Alright. Um, and let's do the minutes per real quick too. Is anyone able to read the minutes from our June twenty first meeting? Anyway. Okay. Um, I read them and they seem, uh, sufficiently accurate. Does anyone want to make a motion to? Thanks Phil, is anyone want a second?
Second.
Thanks Ted. All in favor?
Olive stain. I was up.
Aye, look staining too.
Alright, then we are gonna have to wait until the next meeting to officially approve these minutes then. Cause that's only three yeses. Or three voters, um. So, uh, Nigel and Steve, just make a note that we're gonna have to roll that to the next meeting. Um, okay. What was that?
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Um, alright, so we'll continue with our regular meeting and we have Glenn Sholder. Take it away. Um, before we start Glenn, do we want to agree to kind of a time when we're gonna stop? Do we want to, what do commissioners think? We want to say ten o'clock? We're done with the discussion. We'll move on to the next meeting after that. So that works for everybody?
Yeah, it worked.
Okay, alright Glenn, let's take it away.
Thank you Scott. Um, so with the, uh, testimony that came in at the public hearing plus written communication that was received, uh, I took all of the, uh, information had been submitted to the commission, analyzed, uh, each element of information provided to the commission and broke it up into individual comments. Then for the commission's, uh, use, I organized the comments two different ways for your consideration. One is by section of the regulations the people were referring to. Um, and then I went through each of the comments, um, and based on work that the commission had done, uh, conversations had been had during the development of the regulations. Um, identified the comments by using sort of four categories. Um, one where comments were made that I think would improve the clarity or, uh, function of the regulations. Um, comments that, uh, no change was recommended because these were issues the commission had discussed previously. Um, there were some issues that I identified as possible discussion topics because I think issues were raised here that just get commission's feedback on to make sure that, um, commission's desires and the input from the community had reflected in the regulations. And then the last category was comments which were similar to other things that had already been raised or was a, a statement or an observation but not a particular action, et cetera. Um, and then, uh, based on that, I reorganized the material in a second booklet. Um, second memo for the commission, which is organized by possible action. I have with me here tonight the exhibit list, which identifies, uh, the specific communication that was received. All of the comments have the name and exhibit number, um, for, for its source. Um, so I think if the commission or when the commission's ready, I think we have all the information at our disposal to begin to kind of go through the comments. Um, I think it might not be as efficient to go through them section by section. Um, but it might make sense if the commission is comfortable looking at them by the possible action. Um, so if you were to look at the suggestions for make changes, um, if you are generally comfortable with those changes, then, uh, we could agree to those. Uh, and I can make that happen for the commission. On the other hand, if there's things in there the commission does not agree with or feels uncomfortable about or whatever, uh, we should identify those and we could move those into the discuss column and talk about them when we get there. Um, whatever you think is the best approach.
Yep, I think that sounds great. If you want to just bring it up on your screen and, uh, we'll go through.
So this is the, uh, report, uh, organized by possible action. Um, so the first, uh, group of comments, again, there's five pages, about thirty seven different comments that were made. Um, where, uh, changes are recommended for the commission's con- consideration. Um, in some cases, there are improvements to the definitions, it's some of the, uh, definition section of the regulations. Um, clarity with regard to floor area versus the term maximum heated floor space, which had been inserted in the regulations. Um, densities.
Um, Glenn, if you don't, if you don't mind, let's, I mean, let's briefly touch on each one and, and if, if, if a commissioner has a, a a difference in opinion related to whether we're gonna make that change, then, uh, they can bring it up. Otherwise, we'll move to the next item. Does this, that work?
Sure, yep. Uh, so the first one is the idea of hyperlinks in the document. I've actually already made these changes to the document. It's, uh, amazing how it enhances and improves the utility. Um, I actually have it with me, so if we want to see that at any point tonight, we can certainly look at that.
Um, great.
Within section six of the regulations, uh, one of the sections was removed, uh, and uh, the cross references, uh, I'm not quite sure whether or not those have been updated, so this is just a note to check those cross references in section six to make sure that they're all correct. Um, question, comment was brought up, comment number one here, that, uh, the definition of lot area should clarify, uh, that overhead electrical transmission lines are defined by the easement area. In other words, not by the poles or, or the wires or anything else. It's actually the easement itself. Comment was made about the definition of illegal non-conforming was inaccurate, circular and ineffective. Um, the term is not actually used in the regulation, so I suggest that that definition be removed. Um, somewhere along the way, the definition of projection of a building was changed to include insulation and siding for all buildings. And I'm requesting or suggesting to the commission that that be removed from the definition. Uh, in the past Guilford has not allowed insulation or siding on buildings to intrude into the setbacks. Um, so this was a change, um, and I, my knowledge is not something the commission had talked about. And it actually interacts with section eight of the proposed regulations related to exterior insulation, et cetera. Uh, so, uh, it did allow, uh, insulation and siding. Excuse me, insulation to be added to an existing building, uh, where otherwise they wouldn't be able to insulate the house due to, uh, not being able to show hardship, uh, but at least as part of the work on the regulations, there wasn't an intention to extend that to every house in town. Uh, for them to, uh, not obey the setback requirements.
Yeah, I don't really remember going over that at all, so I'm fine with it going back to what it was.
Is there, is there any limitation on how far out that can go?
Uh, there, there wasn't here in, uh, the way that that had been set up, uh, back in section eight Phil, which is the insulation section, I think it limited there to six or nine inches, I think.
I mean, it's gonna be limited by just cost mostly. There's no other reason why you would do it.
So back in section eight, one D, we did provide for six inches of additional intrusion for insulation of an existing house. In other words, it's a pre-existing non-conforming house. Look, the first application you saw it tonight. Um, they wanted to add insulation to comply with the building code, meet energy requirements, et cetera. Um, they, they could, uh, do that in that particular situation.
Okay.
Um, the definition of projections used to refer to principal accessory buildings, um, and that was just changed. I think it should clarify that, uh, projections are allowed for principal and accessory buildings, um, so that, uh, that's clear.
Yeah.
There was a differentiation between, uh, habitable and not habitable act, attic area in the table. Um, suggestion that a definition of habitable be added. But I think the wording in the table, uh, should be changed to reflect the definition, attics and other horizontal areas accessible or not accessible by permanent inside stairway. I think that provides a clearer way for staff to, uh, inform, uh, and enforce the regulations. Suggestion that the table, uh, uh, allowed projections be revisited since three feet of projections is generous for some of the elements listed. Um, three feet is what's used in the current regulations, but the text, uh, does vary with some of the business districts. Um, it's two feet, uh, and, uh, so on. So I think rather than, uh, make it three feet everywhere, my suggestion would be to use the maximum building projection allowed in the zoning district. Um, so that we don't end up with regulations, different numbers, if you will, in different zones for different reasons.
Okay.
Um, there was a discussion, uh, back as the regulations were, uh, being discussed um, about applying a setback for a principal building to an accessory building if it's located within fifteen feet of the principal building. It's quite a bit of discussion in the comments we received about, um, what impact that might have on the location of accessory buildings and, and so on. The original thought process in this was that once an accessory building gets within fifteen once an accessory building gets within fifteen feet, uh maybe it's going to eventually be joined to the building. So therefore, uh the principal building setback should apply. And I think we, we don't have to get too complicated on this. If it's a principal building, the principal building setbacks apply. If it's an accessory building, the accessory building setbacks apply. If somebody wants to try to connect them, it would be a bit of a challenge because the accessory building would now intrude into the setback. Um, I think we can deal with that at that time, so we don't have to get uh cute, I guess, in the regulation on that particular issue. Somewhere along the way, the term floor area was changed to maximum heated floor space. Uh, and this gets a little bit confusing because it's not in the text in the current regulations. But if you go to table three, which is again, one of the appendices to the current regulations, it does contain uh some references to that phrase. Um, and I think that the best thing to do here is to change the concept of maximum heated floor space back to floor area. What we're interested in here is the bulk of buildings. Um, and how they're configured and used. Um, and I think defining it based on the user absence of heat uh isn't really a a functional way to deal with this. So my suggestion for your consideration is to change maximum heated floor area or floor space back to floor area. Uh, question about why there were setback in the R two district was increased. This was an inadvertent change that uh a table got copied and the number didn't get changed. It was not our intent to make any changes to the setback in the R two. Um, so suggest that change be made. Comment came up about uh section three, five, C four. Um, and it should mention or site plan or subdivision, whichever is appropriate uh for those uses in the used tables. Think clarity on how the density bonuses for affordability units will work with the affordability affordability requirements in section six eleven. Um, and so with the addition of sex- section six eleven, which came after uh section three point five was created, um, the commission might consider removing both C and D in section uh three point five. And that way, the affordability requirements in section six eleven would then apply. Uh, comment was made that the densities in the planned residential development of seemed appeared dread uh extremely generous. Um, the densities were based on the minimum lot size in the district, and we were trying to find a mathematical way to compute the density. Um, and still allow for alternative forms of housing such as townhouses or other types of uh residential development to help meet housing needs to the community. Um, a density bonus is provided for deed restricted affordable units. So the more deed restricted affordable units that are provided, then yes, the density does go up. Um, since uh the new section six eleven uh has a baseline provision of twelve percent affordable units. Uh, my suggestion is that we go back and modify this table to reflect that twelve percent baseline. Um, as part of the requirement and adjust the density bonuses according.
So this is going to depend on, I would assume that uh section six eleven is going to be part of your discussion, one of your discussion group. Um, and this is going to depend on that discussion, won't it?
Yeah, I think it, I think it 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 should, so I'm going to mark that one.
So mark that one, yeah.
Yeah, eleven and twelve has to come back to those.
Yep.
And I think the probably thirteen should also go in there because it also relates to uh
Six eleven.
Yep.
Yep, agreed.
Uh, I think the great observation that provide for affordable housing was not included in the purposes, so I think I would go ahead and make that change. Uh, three point seven is the incentive housing uh development district.
Thanks.
Comment was made that section uh four, four B two does not conform to the Coastal Management Act. This is one of the comments from DEP, so I'd recommend we uh make the changes that DEP has identified, does not be inconsistent. Again, next one was about uh section in four, four B three. I think these are the marine commercial districts that that do not conform to the Coastal Management Act as worded. They gave us a suggestion here. And so I think, hang on a second, or fourth floor, B two, the fourth floor. So I'd like to bring this up on my screen if I, if I may, so let me switch screens here for a second here.
Recording in progress.
Uh, whether or not it's a people. Uh, so we will consider that.
I think you're sharing them through it off. I'm not sure if that's the problem.
I sure turned it off, so I'm trying to change the document.
Oh, I see. I, I think you should just be able to switch tabs.
It's not, I, I got it on full screen though. Oh, it is. I'm not seeing that on my screen, so there we go. Okay, so this will show you now sort of how the click links are going to end up working in the document here. Um, so here, for example, in the table of contents, we're able to uh go back and forth between the sections. But what I wanted to do was show you the way the sidebars are going to work here. These are all the sections in the regulation here, so the comment I'm looking for, I think, had to do with four, four B two. So I can just click on section four, section four point four, and now we get to B two, which is the text I wanted to share with you. So that just gives you a quick example of the ease of navigation we're going to be able to get to on the regulations. In most of the business districts, this text has been added. Um, and it allows a change of use within an existing building. Provided the new use is allowed in the district, complies with the parking requirements. But then the new text was added, adaptive reuse to residential with an affordable set aside can exceed the density maximum if local health department requirements can be satisfied. And I was a little nervous about that because Jamie did a lot of work with the commission on this particular topic or issue. But allowing a modification or exceeding density maxims by a staff approval was something I just wanted to check with the commission as to what your thought process was. So I think.
And your suggestions to move it to to site plan or to special permit?
I think it would be a special permit.
Is that the suggestion you were making, um, Glenn?
I'm more comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with the staff having the ability to grant exceptions to density maxims. Uh, up to whatever the health department, you know, can support with a septic system. I think just hearing the discussion tonight uh on some of these issues, I, I, I think the commission should have some additional consideration on that, so um.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Nigel. Yeah. For the last, I, here we are. Okay, we did that.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was section three was site plan and section four was special permit.
Yeah, so it is that we just said those special permit?
Yeah, which would, which would be four, four B four, I believe, if I saw it correctly.
Oh, you're right, Scott. Thank you.
Yeah.
Get a DEP comment here, number eighteen. Four, five, B three. Yes. Yeah, so this is one that talks about retail sales and or storage of lumber and building materials except heavy construction materials. So there's multiple compound phrases going on in there. And I think Steve, in reviewing the regulations, noticed and identified that. Um, so I think uh proposing simply to reword that to make it clear, uh retail sales of lumber and building materials except heavy construction materials, including storage of the same, I think, uh clarifies the text to reflect what the commission has historically been doing there.
No.
That's not in here.
Hurry.
That's okay. Um. I think I some comments here about coastal jurisdiction line. Uh, and changes mostly to the coastal management section uh recommended by Kevin. Uh, just a observation by me in terms of breaking uh down section five point seven. Which is again, is the Coastal Management Act overlay zone for clarity and then incorporating the DEP comments. I think sexual, section six eleven, I think uh this is the section here on uh affordable housing. And I think that the column here, six eleven B four, uh felt that it needed a third column for uh priority here. Um, essentially what it does, this section uh was designed to allow the configuration of units uh within a development to be reconfigured, provided the same number of housing unit equivalent points were met or exceeded. Um, but the table wasn't as clear as it could be. There was some concern that the proposed regulations would take away the ability of certain uses outside of the Guilford Green District to count offsite parking spaces. Um, and I think what we discovered here as part of our review of this comment is that uh some of the table rows were reversed in terms of parking standards. So uh we want to continue what the commission has historically been doing in this particular area. Um, but that the uh text inadvertently had gotten switched. We want to uh put those back. The observation was made, seven, six, H, one. This is about seven point six is the stormwater section. Um, and it talked about a special alternative uh methodology for single family residences. I think what we discovered was that that would seem to, that language would seem to exclude duplexes, for example, two family buildings or properties with accessory dwelling units. Um, I spoke with Janice about this, and the idea is that we would still want to apply this alternative methodology to small scale residential uses. So we're going to reword that to make sure that it picks up uh two family uh dwellings and uh properties with accessory dwelling in itself. Uh, again, some comments from Connecticut DEP about uh discharge of stormwater in coastal areas and the sensitivity of those areas to that. I checked with Janice on those and she agrees with these statements.
Yeah, I, I guess just one uh question in general, Glenn, then, is all these CTD P things, were you able to review them just to make sure like they line up with state regs and state code and regulations and whatnot?
They looked okay to me.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't I, I'll run them by Steve one more time.
Okay, thanks.
An observation by referring to the latest version of the DEP Stormwater Quality Manual, the state is in the process of revising the two thousand and four manual. It has not been adopted yet. They thought it might be twenty twenty-three, but they're not quite sure. Um, I think the phraseology we're using is two thousand and four as amended, so if it gets adopted before the new manual, we can change it. Otherwise, I think this reference is still okay. Uh, but if we got the wrong year, uh it might disrupt the the tie into the Connecticut manual.
So is that something that we would have to change? Like if it did get updated or is as amended meant to be our future proofing on this?
Future proven.
Okay.
This is not uncommon. So for example, the state manual on soil erosion and sediment control started off in the eighties. It was modified in the early two thousands. Um, so as long as it even said nineteen eighty-five as amended, it's still keeping current. And that one is also being updated at the same time. So I think this is our future proof, Scott. So i- if it had been adopted last year, we would have the new date in here, but at this point, we don't know if it's twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty.
Okay, great.
So those are the ideas for make change, and I've made some notes here on a couple of things that uh I will check on for you and we'll come back to it sometime uh to distant future.
All right, any commissioners have anything? Commissioners, any, any items on this that that popped out to you or any general comments on it? All right. Let's keep moving then.
So these are comments came in that uh no change is being recommended for your consideration by Plan of Metrics. So if there are things that you feel that we should be doing, then please uh call those out. The observation was made that the regulations have grammar or syntax issues. Um, some of these, as we've discovered them, have been addressed along the way, but some may remain. Um, if if these issues do come up, the commission could review and update in the future to address those grammar and syntax issues.
Right, so it's kind of a, it's not exactly a no change, it kind of is, you have done this.
It's been going along. I, I couldn't say to the commission that there aren't grammar syntax issues uh that still existed regulations, but um I think.
Come on, it's impossible in a, in a document this big that there wouldn't be a few.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that this isn't exactly a no change. This is like, yeah, we're, we're, you know.
If we find them, we'll fix them.
Right, and that's what I meant to imply. So thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Um, comments were made uh from several people about the definition of acre being changed from a builder's acre forty thousand square feet to the actual size of an acre at forty three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. I think in many zoning regulations in Connecticut, the concept of a builder's acre evolved because of the round number and it it worked effectively in this day and age of, you know, digital surveying and assessors records and GIS and everything else, it's much more common to use the actual acreage. Um, so uh while that might result in a nine percent reduction in density, there are situations where the density factors were actually increased a little bit, which some people also commented on. So I think these two interact with each other. Um, but I think realistically, it's time to reflect the fact that an acre is forty three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So uh my suggestion for your consideration is no change uh to what the regulations say, which is forty three, five, six.
Which is a change from what it was on the old ones?
Yeah, so when I say no change here, it's no, it's no change from what the regulations are saying at the present time.
I'm just clarifying, uh, in the comments where there um you know, specific examples stated of what effect this might have. Or is it on like existing, is it has an effect on existing or is it future or or what were the concerns?
No, I think the way that acre is applied in the regulations is really revolving around uh density calculations, for example. So if you get actually units per acre, you know, the math would either be done on a quote builder's acre of forty thousand square feet or a total acre of forty three, five, sixty, so um.
So this affects future, this affects future applications, not really past ones.
No, but what, what's existing would is on the ground uh at the present time.
Right.
But again, there's uh places throughout the regulations where the densities have been adjusted.
And then this was done as a, as a change because it's, we're conforming with state standard, basically?
Well, it's, it's, it is the definition of an acre.
Okay.
Um, comment was made that the definition of buildable land and developable land should match. In fact, those two terms are used in the regulations for different purposes and different reasons. The phrase buildable land appears twenty-one times in the regulations and developable land appears nine times in the regulations. Buildable land is used to establish the minimum area on a new lot being created. So for example, in the R three or another district, it might have a minimal lot size of forty thousand square feet and buildable area requirement of something less than that. Um, developable land, on the other hand, is used in the conservation subdivision approach to determine the maximum of lots or units that can be created. Developable land, on the other hand, is used in the conservation subdivision approach to determine the maximum of lots or units that can be created. So the definitions are slightly different because they're being used for different purposes, so making them consistent would. Intermingle those two, that's not what the proposal had been to the commission for your consideration. Again, another comment about buildable and developable and felt that. Definition should conform to the wetlands regulations and again that. The definition of wetlands and watercourses and zoning regulations is the same as the wetlands regulations and state statutes. So there's no need to make a change to to reflect that.
Scott, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Did we end up deciding to include or exclude wetlands from? Our consideration of buildable and developable? Or include, so currently it's, you know, your total area is inclusive of wetlands. I'm just, I'll just throw that out, and for some reason I recall that. The definition was going to be changed to exclude wetlands and steepest startments and some other things.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from Phil, because I don't remember us ever saying that we wanted to change that.
I I agree, it was, it was, I remember discussing it because it was going to be a big change.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure to have it changed.
I think in talking to Glenn, I believe in talking to Glenn on this, when we discussed that it was not changing for what it was before. But you can correct us if. On that.
Yeah, I think I know you guys spent quite a bit of time working with Jamie on this, so I think.
I think the directive basically is, as far as we're concerned, should conform with the definition we had before.
I thought that only applied to the conservation subdivision, not the other types of subdivisions.
Well, that's the difference between developable and buildable, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so buildable land is in the tables in section three. So for example, here if, oh, this is the R one, just let me just pick R four or something like that. If you are going to create a new lot in the R four district. If it's a front lot, it has to have thirty thousand square feet of area and it has to have. At least thirty thousand square feet of contiguous buildable area. So that's two requirements to create a lot, and this is the only time, I think I said to you that buildable only appeared nine times in the regulations. That is here is once in each of the eight residential zoning districts and once in the definition. So that's how this term is used, is that if you're creating a lot, it's got to be a functional lot. And again, so for example, in the R five district, forty thousand square foot and forty thousand square feet of buildable. I think in the R six district, sixty thousand square foot lot, at least forty thousand of it has to be buildable. So that's the way it's it's a. Regulation, if you will, it really affects only the creation of new lots.
And can you go back to that definition? So excluding. Wetlands, tidal wetlands, watercourses. Right, so Phil, that's answers your question, right? It's consistent with what it was before.
I don't think so, so right now.
You think it's the opposite?
I think it's the opposite, I mean, right now we're excluding inland wetland tidal wetlands or water course, and I don't believe that currently that's excluded. In the consideration.
Can you check that Glenn, please?
Yep.
Well, that's a big deal.
It is a big deal.
And that means a bigger discussion later, I think at this point, that's why we discussed leaving it as is for this rewrite. So let's check the old one Glenn and make sure your new definition is conforming with the old one.
Yep, got it, thank you.
Thanks Phil.
I think the next comment is number thirty nine happened to do with heated space, if we're going to use that phraseology, then it should be defined. And so my suggestion again from making the change was that. We remove the term heated space and as a result, no definition is needed.
Yeah, that relates to another comment earlier, right? Yep.
There was a comment made that the zoning regulations should include definitions of disturb the natural indigenous character of the land, regulated activity and significant impact activity. These primarily go with wetland applications, these are wetland related terms are not used in the zoning regulations, so I didn't see any need to include those in the regulations.
Okay, is it, are they defined in the wetlands information?
Regulated activity certainly is and significant impact activity, I imagine is disturb the natural indigenous character of the land might be in there as well. Or it might be defined in wetlands law.
All right, thank you.
Comment was made about distinguishing in the regulations between gross density and net density. My understanding is commission talked extensively about how they wanted to regulate density in the different residential districts. So I don't believe that any change that. I have made is any different than the changes the commission made working with Jamie on this, so recommended no future change on this. So when we get the buildable thing, yeah, I'm just going to circle forty one as well. Make sure that we're consistent with that as well.
So what is it currently then, is it gross or is it net currently?
Question is how you'd work on gross and net, so the issue would be if in the conservation development section, we're actually. We're calculating densities based on developable land, which subtracts natural resources.
Right.
So if you were to look at it based on. How we define the terminology here, so if we have a hundred acres of land. And ninety acres of it are developable, the density factor is based on the ninety acres of developable land. So on the gross area of the parcel, the density would be somewhat less. Because the density was based on the ninety percent that's developable, so this is where the terms gross and net can get a little bit. Possibly confusing here, and I think the regulations here are pretty straightforward. The sections on residential development define the term and the density factor that's going to apply. The comment about further restrictions on Airbnb or request for the Board of Selectmen to create legislation that supports. More year round housing options, there is a case working its way through the Connecticut Supreme Court. That may affect this issue in the future. And may cause the commission to want to modify their regulations to indicate that short term rental is not a permitted use in a residential zone. But I, my suggestion here is that. Supreme Court's going to make a decision, I would think in the next six to twelve months. And I think that once that decision gets made, then the commission would know how to update your regulations beforehand.
Well, certainly this person could send a request to Board of Selectmen like, like, what's written out? As well, that's probably where an ordinance would have to live.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't. Rule that.
I mean, it's, it's kind of gray right now Ted, and we've, we've discussed it. Publicly a couple, a couple of times and kind of come to a consistency on how we handle things. But certainly if there's a push for a specific definition, that would have to be fully vetted and adjusted later.
Yeah, and I think. I had made a note to myself to talk to the commissioner's attorney Chuck Andrews about this, but I think we're on the slippery or the knife edge, if you will. About was this change to the regulations noticed and the issue is not, it wasn't.
Right.
So I think sliding in at this point in time is an expansion of what we're proposing, I would suggest we not do that.
Yeah, we just leave it as is for now and if it needs to be adjusted later, it can be.
Yep. Comment number forty three was an observation that. You can park an RV in a residential zone for an extended period of time, but a commercial truck can't be parked overnight, I think it was kind of an observation, but. No, no changes proposed in the way the commission has regulated those historically.
Can I ask a question, because this may have, this this discussion probably came up before I joined the commission, but. I've had several townspeople complain to me about this issue of parking. Enormous RVs, I mean, the kind that get towed as trailers. In the front yards of houses. And and these things the size of of mobile homes, I mean. When you extend them out, you know, you pull out all these extensions, et cetera. It 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 just covers the whole lawn. I mean, do we have any restrictions on that?
So we do currently have restrictions in the regulations, but I don't have it in front of me right now, so I wouldn't be able to go into specifics. And I would imagine that those are carried over into the new regulations as well.
So in the regulations right now, or excuse me, in the proposed regulations, section three ninety. Is addressing this issue, the way I got to here is I went into the residential zones, I looked at accessory uses, there's a characterization. Parking and storage, and it says in accordance with section three ninety, and so that's what got me here. So I think that's a logical route, if you will, the requirement states that one recreational vehicle may be parked or stored on the lot in a residential district. Except that the commission may by special permit authorize the parking of a second recreational vehicle, so one is okay, the second one requires a special permit for the commission. Located so as not to obstruct sightlines and no joining streets or substantially obstructive view light or air from joining residential structure. No recreational vehicles be occupied will park or store on any lot in any district. Except temporarily in connection with travel away from the lot or unless approved by the commission by special permit.
Right.
Commission wanted to add a prohibition in a front yard, you can't be parked in a front yard or has to be the front yard setback or something else, that would be. Possibly a future change for the commission to consider.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to do that now, what do you think Ted?
Well, I I mean, I I think Scott, that's something that we we've got to. Think about, I mean, I I could show, I could go take some pictures of some of these. I mean, they're thirty and forty foot long and they're parked, you know, within three or four feet of the street. And they take up the whole front yard.
Well, if it's obscuring a sightline technically, then it it's a not, it's currently against the regs.
Different issue of sightline, but I.
Or if it's occupied, then it's currently against the regs, yeah, I I don't disagree that there needs to be a little more detail here, but I think. My plan kind of is once we get our new town planner is to really. Lean into the need for kind of revitalizing our planning committee and our zoning committee and. Let's regularly throw things like this at them, asking them to present potential amendments.
The case for or against?
Right, exactly. Yeah. Does that make sense Ted to you too?
Okay, but I mean, I I, I'm just raising the issue that that this is something that people are talking about. And when I, you know, and I I'll drive around a neighborhood. This looks fine, this looks fine, this looks fine, this looks like a mobile home. I I mean, some of these units are bigger than the house that they're in front of.
Okay.
Yeah, so I I think that I think this sounds like it could be ripe for further action, it was not included in the regulations that went to public hearing, so. I don't, I don't think we can do it at this time, but I think we'll put it on our list for the future. Comment number forty four was concerned about whether the addition of buildable land would reduce the amount of lot coverage. Or floor area allowed on a property, and the observation I made is that this only applies to the lot itself. And the lot coverage and the floor area are based on total lot area, not buildable area, so this, this, this buildable land concept has no impact on. How much house somebody can build. There was concern that the floor area ratio regulation was removed, I think there was an earlier version of the summary of major changes. That implied that, but I think actually the floor area was renamed to maximum heated floor space. By staff, and so FAR is still in the regulations, the ratio is not changed. And the recommendation we had back in the section about make make this change is to retitle it back to floor area ratio. So I think we're going to address this particular issue in that way.
Yep, that's fine.
And again, this is also a comment related to heated floor area, the current definition of floor excludes garages, so no changes. I I believe is needed to address this comment either. There was a concern that impervious coverage controls were being removed. Actually, in the residential zones, impervious coverage was never regulated or is not regulated at the present time, table three only regulates lot coverage. By buildings and other structures and the impervious coverage limitations in the regulations are still in place for commercial districts. So we have a situation in many of our residential districts today that the side yard setback has two different standards. And one of them is what we call the sum of setbacks, so for example, in a residential district, the current regulations might say. Minimum ten feet, some of the setbacks thirty feet. Now, what that means is, is that one has to be at least ten, the other one has to be at least twenty to get to the thirty, so as long as you. You know, move maneuver the house around to be not less than ten and at least thirty for both, you're okay. And this can create some challenges, I had an interesting conversation with somebody that indicated. That these setbacks can also vary based on the building, so that. You could have a principal building ten feet from the right hand property line, then an accessory building behind that. Ten feet from the left property line, et cetera, which is really the same functional equivalent of a ten foot side yard setback. So the suggestion here to avoid variances or other things that may be required is to simply go with the. Minimum side yard setback in all the residential districts. It's not a huge or major impact. It may make it easier for people to add first floor master bedrooms, although having to go for variances or other things like that. But this is something the towns had done sort of in years past and fewer and fewer towns are doing these days. And so in the discussions with staff, putting the regulations together, we thought that this was a helpful addition. And so at this time, we're recommending for your consideration, no change to. The elimination of the sum of the setback requirement.
So the the change was suggested by staff to make it less confusing basically, to make it simpler.
Yes.
I mean, is, do you have a feeling on whether this makes some lots nonconforming?
Oh, I think it would make more lots conforming.
Okay.
So in other words, right now, you could have a a particular lot that would have to have, you know, say. One yard it would be at twelve feet, the other yard would be at eighteen feet. Now you might go to a standard that simply says, look, the required setback in that zone is ten feet on each side. So on the side that was the house was at eighteen feet, you've got eight feet that you could put on a sunroom, or you could put on an addition, or you could. First floor master bedroom, expand your kitchen out, put a foyer on or or other things like that. If the house had been built in a mirror image, you would have had the ten feet on that side, so it's sort of a random thing. But again, it's, it's an opportunity for people to to do things with their property. Forty nine was again, this concept about the sum of the setbacks and again, it's. Using it, applying it separately. Using it uh, applying it separately for different buildings um and uh similar uh arguments what we just talked about. Um, with regard to the conservation subdivision, there was a thought that uh density bonuses were being added. Um, and the density bonuses were meant to be neutral, if you will, to what the minimum lot size requirements are in the zoning districts and in relation to. The extent of natural resource constraints on the property. Um, so uh. No, no change was, was being suggested. Um, these are meant to be neutral. Um, that's the way that the uh, the math was done in terms of the density factors.
So, right, the, the purpose is just to increase a little flexibility, right, and does, and design. Not necessarily to increase.
The flexibility that can come in a conservation subdivision is attractive. You get more flexibility in terms of lot layouts, you can build less distance of road, you can avoid wetlands crossings that you might otherwise be. Enticed to attempt, uh, because if you don't, you're gonna lose some lots, whereas with the conservation subdivision, you can preserve the wetland, preserve more open space. Um, and the lots, same number of lots, but they might be uh focused in just a particular portion of the site. So again, it was meant to be neutral over the whole site um and provide flexibility on where the uh units would be cited. Comment number fifty-one uh was whether or not the proportionality factor buildable and buildable land had been omitted for open space. Um, actually, this proportionality factor is located in the subdivision regulations and that's, that hasn't changed. So it wasn't. Uh, part of the zoning regulations, it's part of the subdivision regulations, and again, it's not being changed. Was concerned that uh in the incentive housing uh development regulation. Um, it identified eligible locations. The comment was made, well, if we just identify these eligible locations, that means we can't have housing flexibility in other parts of Guilford. Uh, but in fact, the incentive housing development does provide s- some incentives. Um, and really in particular areas which are more transit oriented, supportive of, you know, the town center area, uh, et cetera. Um, and so this. Use of eligible locations and the incentive housing development doesn't prevent. Flexibility that might exist in the other sections of the regulations.
Right, so that's a, that's just a term that's describing something in a previous paragraph, right? It's not, it's not a. Uh, it's not a definition that's being used.
Uh, no, I think in the regulations. So here in three seven B, we're talking about eligible locations.
Right, okay, yeah, so it is referring to a section called eligible occasions, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Right, so that section, yeah, it's describing what section, what, yeah, that makes sense.
And then we're concerned, this person was concerned that that might uh prevent housing options elsewhere and it, it will not or should not.
Sure.
There was a request that the eligibility criteria we were just looking at not include the train station and not include bus service. And I think again, this.
That's the whole point.
I, 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 that's why I suggested no change.
Right.
Uh, fifty-four was whether or not a definition of incentive housing development is needed and it's really a, the uh. Development item uh which is described in the district. Um, so I didn't feel the definition was needed for that. An observation that perhaps the section is vague and, you know, be sure that a reference is made to section six eleven. But section uh three point seven does contain in it affordable housing requirements. Which are actually uh more significant in many cases than section six eleven. So this kind of exists independently, um, and the more uh. Housing that, that you would provide, um, I think it's uh the affordability requirement, I believe is twenty percent.
Yep.
Yep, twenty percent, three seven C says twenty percent. Comment fifty-six, wondered what type of approval is required for an incentive housing development. Specifies that a special permit application is required, so it's, it's already spelled out. There's no need to make any change for that. There was a concern about the density allowed in a special housing development. Um, this is a section of the regulations that was created to support what the housing authority does. For example, so the only time that section three point eight applies or could apply to the commission. Is a development being proposed by the Guilford Housing Authority or another nonprofit housing entity. Uh, and at that point in time, um, the regulation provides quite a bit of flexibility to try to uh address. Developments which are generally a hundred percent affordable housing or eighty percent affordable housing, um, in those types of situations.
Yeah, but that's, those, that's not as a right though, it doesn't, it has to come before us still, right?
Oh, yes, I think everything in the, in that district, I believe, is a.
Right, so it's still good, it's due review by the commission.
Yeah, I, I think uh special housing development. Or with, just for sex.
Oh, you're looking that up. I, I, I make the observation that Larry has joined us. And uh, that's really good because he can take on the uh ten to four shifts.
By all means.
You didn't, you didn't tell him we nominated him for the regional planning commission, right?
Yeah.
Um, so uh, just getting back to your comments, Scott, I think uh special housing developments are special permit in all of the zoning districts, so.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Um, there. Comment was about unclear how section three point eight ties to section six eleven. And again, section three point eight is for assisted housing, which is usually a hundred percent affordable units. Um, that uh is what the housing authority would do uh through the funding that's available to them. Um, or other nonprofits, it might be eighty percent affordable. Um, so uh the affordability requirement is because the entity. Is involved with the creation of affordable house. Um. So the comments were made about accessory dwelling units and whether a special permit should still be required. Um, this is comment fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one. Um, related to accessory dwelling units. Um, the comment on all of these is essentially the same. The commission opted into the state provisions regarding accessory dwelling units. The special permit was not authorized by that. Um, so people are expressing concern about accessory dwelling units becoming. Uh, a zoning permit activity. Um, this is a change from what the community is currently doing, but this is also part of a change which is happening statewide. Um, and the commission decided to opt in. Section comments on section three nine B, um, this has to do with home-based businesses. Um, comment was made that the current uh standard or approach in town is essentially no evidence of activity. Um, and uh commenter felt that enabling home-based business by special permit um can uh. Not enabling home-based businesses by special permit might prevent uncertainty for neighbors of a budding property. What we did with home-based businesses, and the commission probably recalls, is we identified the fact that with COVID. Many people were operating out of their house with home-based work, so it wasn't just a home-based business. It was sort of home-based employment activities. We created a hierarchy of different types of home-based businesses. And uh, some of them are permitted as of right. You can work out of your house three days a week and go into the office too. All of that is fine. You don't need a special permit for that type of activity. Um, there might be situations that you're uh an attorney working out of your house or doing other types of business and. Provided that there are not significant, uh, you're not employing outside people, there's not significant traffic to your residents. Essentially, it's. Almost invisible. Um, that doesn't require an elevated review. Uh, but when it gets to the point that uh somebody suggests they'd like to do employment or like to have customers or visitors come to the premises. That is now a situation that there is clearly going to be evidence of activity at the site, and that is where an elevated review comes in. So there's been a change in the structure of home-based businesses. Uh, but I think uh we've tried to provide reasonable standards for how that would work. Uh, comment number sixty-four, commenter was concerned that town center south overlay district isn't appropriate for Guilford and lacks controls. Um, that zone has been in place for about two decades. I think I worked with the commission to adopt that back in two thousand and four. Um, so uh, we're not changing it. We're just uh continuing on with those provisions. Comment related to section six eleven again. Uh, the question, uh commenter felt that it wasn't clear what the housing unit equivalent points language is encouraging in the regulation. This is a situation where uh the regulation allows for adjustment in the number, location of affordable units within a development. In Guilford receives more housing unit equivalent points, which. Housing unit equivalent points contribute to the possibility of a moratorium for Guilford for the creation of affordable housing. This could be a situation that uh, I don't think I had this conversation with the commission, but if. For example, there was a piece of property in, near the water. And so the market rate units might all benefit from having water views. The general principle on affordable developments is that the affordable units and the market rate units are equivalent in many ways. And this says, well, hang on a second here, uh, somebody for an affordable unit get a waterfront view or not? And this regulation is meant to provide some flexibility that somebody could say, okay, well, the market rates are all going to be the water views. But we're going to provide more units without the water view. And result in the same number or a greater number of housing unit equivalent points. So this might be a way for the commission to consider alternatives here that might provide more affordable housing units or a, a fairer or. Reasonable uh distribution of units within a development.
Yeah, I think that just relates to the future discussion about that section, right?
Yeah, I think it could.
Okay.
We currently have essentially no parking requirement within the Guilford Green District. We rely on the fact we have on-street parking and public parking in the area. And the question is, well, could we expand that out to other areas nearby such as within fifteen hundred feet? And again, I think that's something that could be considered later uh by the commission, but essentially we're trying to continue what the commission's been doing today.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that concept is, is a whole different thing. I mean. We've had, I, I think we'd have to have a public hearing on something that, that broad.
Yep, and I think having, maybe even doing a study of parking demand and parking supply over that broader area. Um, could help us identify whether that was needed or not. Um, a question was made whether or not medical dental facilities need as many parking spaces um as uh are required in the regulations. Institute of Transportation Engineer data shows that medical dental requires more spaces than regular office. Um, I, I think this is a situation where the commission could come back and revisit this in the future. COVID has changed the way that many businesses operate. Um, but I, I think we want to have some more longer-term data about. Uh, medical dental facilities and how their patients move in and out to make sure we did have enough parking spaces here. So that's. No change from where we're at, at the present time.
What does ITE stand for again?
Institute of Transportation Engineers, they're the ones who do generally parking generation studies which are used by uh transportation engineers, planners, et cetera.
Got it, thank you.
Um, I just made an observation here. You may recall at the start of the public hearing to go back and review the EV charging regulations. Um, the state actually adopted a standard or requirement for municipalities that uh. If more than thirty parking spaces are being added on a site, the mission has to require that um the sites uh. At least ten percent of those parking spaces be um electric vehicle capable. Which means the circuitry has to be in, the panel capacity has to be in conduit and uh to the uh. Location of a future charger, but the charger doesn't actually have to be installed. But if you don't get the infrastructure in the beginning, it's going to be very difficult to do it later. Um, so uh, I did check, we are okay, so no changes required as part of that. Section seven three F four, comment number sixty-nine, allowed for temporary parking installation reduction. So. When I was a town planner some years ago. Um, our parking requirement for retail store was quite hefty at that time. Um, and somebody came in with a furniture store. It is perhaps you're aware, a furniture store could be a big facility. But there aren't a lot of customers in the store at the, at, at any one time, and they asked for a reduction, didn't want to have to install all of the spaces. And so what some communities allow is that, yes, you don't have to pave all the spaces, but you have to put the drainage, the grading and everything else in place. And your plan has to show that you can install the number of spaces. Should it be changed from a furniture store to a regular retail store in the future? And here we are some decades later, when in fact that did happen on that particular site. The question was made was that, well, why do I have to put in a fully engineered stormwater system? Uh, and the issue is again, what we're trying to do here is provide some relief. Uh, but to make sure that it's easy to install those spaces in the future by just having to go out and put the pavement down. Rather than go in and put uh drainage facilities in. So uh, we're. Suggest for the commission's consideration that we stick with the basic concept. That uh, yes, you, you put the drainage, you grade it, you put the drainage in, but you don't have to, to pave it. Um, uh, if you want to, you can, you can do all of that work.
Yeah, uh, would you say that that's consistent with what a lot of comparable towns of ours are doing?
Yes, I mean, I, I think again, impervious coverage with concerns over drainage are becoming a much bigger issue, so. I think these become areas where we can address these with the current transition in these regulations to what we call LID or low-impact development or drainage. Um, I think we have the opportunity now to be gentler on the land with drainage. Um, so. It's consistent with that type of approach, Scott.
Yeah.
Um, Scott, I would, uh, not, not that. Running over is the end of the world, but is, it is ten, so we're gonna.
Yep.
Call it for tonight.
Yeah, so that was, uh, what item was that? Glenn, number seventy?
Yeah, we're at seventy. Do you want to just do the last uh?
Is that the end of this section?
Yes, it is.
Is there a, we're just finishing the, this last page? Yeah, let's go for that.
Yeah, so I, again, just questions about stormwater section, uh, whether or not it would make some uh projects infeasible. The, the town has been doing LID regulations for quite some time using outdated or uh standards and uh documentation. We're bringing Guilford into compliance with the statewide Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. Uh, we've provided for an alternative methodology for single-family, two-family and accessory dwelling unit properties. So we don't think it's going to make projects infeasible. Uh, these are requirements which are being established by the state and federal government and Guilford's in the process of complying. Uh, again, uh, question about whether or not there's different thresholds for some of the stormwater requirements. Um, Janice is, the engineering department is in the process of putting together explanatory materials for people. Um, so that uh, to try to facilitate compliance uh with these types of things. Um, so at this point in time, we're. For this drainage-related stuff, um, no changes are recommended. I think I got a chuckle out of number seventy-six. This is a comment that came in at the meeting as to whether or not the town engineer had any input on these regulations. Cause they felt that they were cut and pasted from elsewhere, and in fact, Janice was very involved in crafting these regulations. I think she did use another municipality as a foundation to start with, uh, but she tailored these to Guilford. I think the last comment uh has to do with the concept of insulation upgrades. Again, um, the comment was made that if the change. Uh, in the definition of projections was made, insulation and siding was exempted there and could intrude into a. In the definition of projections was made, insulation and siding was exempted there and could intrude into a side yard setback. And suggestion is no, that's not what we were originally trying to do. So the original intent was to limit the insulation upgrade for existing homes. And it wasn't intended for all buildings in all zones, new buildings can. And should be cited to meet the setbacks as is required today. So we're not looking to change the depth and projections. So I think if all of that sounds okay to the commission. When we get together, I think our next meeting is next week, we can start on the topics on discuss.
So, yeah, just commissioners that are here, go ahead, Kevin, if you have a question.
I I do, thank you, Scott. So Glenn, if you wouldn't mind. Like you to flesh something out for me a little bit more detail. It has to do with comment number fifty. It was the the point about feels the density bonuses are not needed and the flexibility offered is incentive enough.
Yeah.
And you had, you had said that that. The density bonuses weren't going to happen because it is a net neutral calculation. Now, is that net neutral off right off the top in the beginning? And the reason I ask is because if you go to. The working copy of the regulations, section three point five point five. Point five is a density bonus, and there's four different criteria. That could gain somebody a density bonus.
Three point five. Oh, B five. Oh, I see what you're saying here. Okay, so this. This is a scenario where if somebody is able to go above and beyond the base requirements. For conservation development that they might. The commission might grant a density bonus. So the base requirement is at least fifty percent of the land has to be preserved as open space. And if somebody provides sixty or seventy percent of the land is is open space or something more than fifty percent. The commission could grant them a density bonus as a result of that. You can grant a lot density bonus for the preservation of open space elsewhere in Guilford. So if somebody preserves a piece of land on a sensitive salt marsh or something else, or up in the. The rocks in the north end of town or whatever. Contributes that open space as part of a subdivision proposal elsewhere, a commission might consider a density bonus for that. If deed restricted affordable housing is going to be constructed. That's probably one we should look at. Because now that did not, that was in there before. See, uh, six eleven was created, so.
Yeah, just make a note to revisit it based off of the discussion.
But it's not really necessarily net neutral.
So, well, Kevin, it's, so I think what he was saying was that the the density factors that are the basis of this section. Are what's net neutral, but then. If somebody wanted to go above and beyond of these certain parameters, they could. As part of their special permit, they could come and ask for. A bonus. It's not like an automatic bonus kind of thing.
Okay, that's that's.
Yeah, that's my reading of this, correct, Glenn?
Yeah, I think in all.
Every one of these say may grant.
May also grant, so the issue is somebody would request. The commission may say yes or no.
Yeah.
You want, you might want to change C and D to also say may grant, so it's consistent.
That's what I was gonna say, thank you. Yeah, they don't, they don't say may.
And I don't know, maybe Kevin, do you think the the term density bonus is slightly misleading? Should we come up with a different name for that? Or, I don't know. If you have another suggestion, Glenn, you could look at that.
No, I think that's a great observation. I think it it does create. I I hadn't. Read it the way that you you raised, and so I think, yeah, so let me let me take a look at renaming this. And rewording this to include the may language in all of those subsections as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good, so.
Thank you.
We, um, so we're we're hoping to have us, you know, since we're trying to continue our regular meetings, but also. Get this done. The thought was to do a special meeting. Glenn proposed that one would be next Wednesday. My only question on that is for Steve or, I don't know if Steve's still here. But Nigel, we just need to confirm that it's properly noticed. There's proper pub, proper public notice for us to have that meeting. I I will not admit to being. Fully in knowledge of all those rules and regs, so I just want to have Nigel, you and Steve can connect on making sure. If we are going to have that Wednesday meeting next week, that it's noticed properly and.
Sure.
Uh, we can have it. Otherwise, commissioners, you know, we sent that along. I didn't hear anybody coming back saying they didn't want to meet next Wednesday, so is everybody all right with? With that plan?
Yeah, that's that's okay.
Okay, we will keep it like, what, two hours max or something? And, you know, as we, as you could see from Glenn's. List, we're we're going to be into the the discussion points now, so.
That's that's going to be slower going, yeah.
Right, but that was kind of the point too of wanting to, if we're going to be in discussion mode, let's be in discussion mode. Let's not, you know, I didn't want to mix it all up, so. I'm glad we were able to get through a lot here today. Yeah, Ted.
If we're going to meet on next Wednesday, can we start at seven and say we're gonna have a hard stop at ten? Let's see, and let's try and get three hours in.
That's fine, I'll follow that. Yep. So that's my only point on that, and so Nigel and Steve, you guys check that out, make sure we're legal in terms of having that meeting. And the properly noticed, and if so, then then that'll be the plan. For our next discussion. All right, otherwise, if we need more time, it will continue on, it'll it'll likely be as part of the next meeting, which is August. Second. Glenn, thank you for your time, I appreciate that. I think we got through a lot, so I'm pretty happy with. With how that went. All right. Just close out some things here. Uh, let's see, we do have Larry here now, but that's probably still not enough to get the minutes approved, so we'll wait to the next meeting for that still. Otherwise, Nigel, you didn't have anything else we needed to discuss, did you? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All favors?
Hi.
Hi, thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.